6:01, I'd like to call the meeting of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board to order. Excuse me, hello? I can't bang, but I need quiet, please. Thank you. I can't hear. Hard enough to hear. At this point, I'd like to appoint a process observer. Is there anyone willing to do that? Krista, thank you. Remind me at the end, because I will forget you. Okay. Are there any agenda adjustments?
Not at this time.
Great. So nominations, resignations, and correspondence.
Yep, I have one. I am nominating Logan Seely.
What's his name?
Seely, S.E.E.L.E.Y., as the network manager. As you know, Rich Raymond is retiring. Carol Tyler has moved into that role this year, and Rich backfilled the network administrator's role, manager's role, which is a co-op position. So we have been actively out interviewing and investigating, and through a well-designed process run by Carol Tyler, who is moving into Rich's role as the SAU administrator, and meeting the candidate, we're recommending Logan. Logan comes to us with a bachelor's in computer science from King State College. He has experience in data entry and technical aspects around the computer. He has one-year management experience. His salary would be $65,000 for the entire year. It would be prorated to $32,500 for the second half of this year. And I'd gladly take any questions on Logan. We're excited about this. It's somebody who we believe we can cultivate and work with, and eventually, you know, move forward with further degrees and expertise. And I think under Carol's leadership and the reworking of that department this summer, with Rich's 20-plus years of experience guiding us, we're in very good shape.
Is he working at the high school or middle school?
He would be a co-op employee, so he would work for both buildings, and at times be backfill hours in other districts and be compensated by the other district.
I just, where is his office?
He would be at the SAU and the co-op district.
Okay.
What's the actual title of the position?
He is the network manager.
Are there any other questions? So I need a motion to accept the superintendent's nomination of Logan Seely for the position of network manager at a salary of $65,000 annually?
So moved.
Moved by Tom.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other comments or questions? Discussion?
When would he start?
He would start in the next coming weeks. So we'll have the overlap, intentional overlap between him and Rich and Carol.
Any other questions? All in favor? Six-zero. Okay.
And that's it for that portion.
Okay, I have a little comment on correspondence, but before I do that, I do want to quickly make introductions, because I forgot to do that. I'm Holly Durlow Babcock. I'm the chair. Tom Solon to my left is our vice chair. Cindy, same as Liz Brown, school board member. Kate Stoll, school board member. Patrick West, the principal of the middle school, Hollis Brookline Middle School. Tim Grison, the principal of the Hollis Brookline High School. Coming around here, we've got Cindy Van Conant, also a school board member. Krista Whalen, school board member. Linda Sherwood, our assistant BA. Gina Berchelk, our assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction. And of course, Mr. Corey, superintendent of schools. So I want to just kind of comment on some correspondence that we've received. The school board has received numerous web-generated form letters that have come from some members of our community and from some folks outside of Hollis Brookline. Although I cannot speak for the entire board, I'm aware that we have all read the notice and have considered it thoughtfully and fully. We have researched the concerns and have heard from the Department of Education, Legal Counsel, and the New Hampshire School Board Association that the authority in question in this notice is within the realm of the school board, and in this case does sit in the hands of the superintendent. We've also been advised that it does not obligate the board to any further response. We've also received numerous emails from members of the community supporting the mask mandate, or even supporting more protocols or stronger protocols to deal with COVID. We take all of this input sincerely to heart. In these difficult times, I wanted to let the community know that we read everything and consider it. Ultimately, our decisions are made in public and are available in the posted minutes. We have also received a formal complaint in the last two days, and as board, we take all complaints seriously, and we will be reviewing that complaint at our February 16th board meeting. Finally, the challenges of the pandemic have led to so much divisiveness and hostility, and those of us sitting here tonight appreciate the frustration and the true concerns that parents and community members have surrounding anything that impacts their students in our district. But I can honestly say that no one that is sitting at this table is acting in any way other than out of concern for our kids. We do not do anything intentionally malicious or with ill will, but rather, I can attest that the people who are serving on this board and who are working tirelessly in our SAU office and in the building administration offices are some of the most ethical and the most compassionate people I know, and I feel honored to serve with them and to work with them. So that's pretty much our correspondence, I think. Any comments, questions? Moving on. We need to approve some minutes. The first set of minutes, we had Cindy and Liz were not there. So it's the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board minutes of December 8, 2020. I'm going to need a motion to accept as amended, and the amendments are as follows. Page three, line 23, replace "sent" with "send." Page seven, line 30, delete "and." Page 10, line 10, replace "C.A.C." with "A.C." And page 11, line 46, delete the word "and." I need a motion to accept as amended. Moved by Tom.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? I think we have four. No opposed, and abstentions, two. Thank you. We also had some non-public minutes. On December 8, 2021, at that point, we had Brown, Van Conant, and Williams were absent. I need a motion to present those as, to accept those as presented. Moved by Tom. Seconded by Kate. And all in favor? Four. And opposed, zero. And abstentions? Two. Great. Okay, moving on. Okay. In a few moments, I'm going to open the floor for public input. During public input, we follow policy BEDH, which is available on the SAU website under boards, under policy, a co-op policy. As we know, the primary purpose of school board meetings is to conduct the business of the board as it relates to school policies, programs, and operations. We encourage residents to attend. We encourage input, but we will only, at this point, we're setting aside 15 minutes for public input. We ask that when speakers come to the mic, they provide their name and address. We're giving speakers an allotted three minutes per person, consistent with policy RSA 91-A3, policy BED, and laws pertaining to student and family privacy rights. The board will not place any matter on the public agenda. That is to be properly discussed in a non-public session. We also reserve the right to limit public discussion at board meetings to agenda items only. We ask that all speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner and be respectful. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. And just a reminder, board meetings are not a public forum, and it's not district meeting. It's a business meeting where we are doing the business and we're accepting and listening to public input. This is not a time for question and answer, or debate, or back and forth. However, we will always often address during our discussion or deliberation something that we've listened to or heard during public input. So it's wise sometimes to stay and listen, or at least go home and listen, if you're curious as to how maybe you are impacting us. So at this point, at, oh, that watch isn't working, 6:10, I'd like to open the floor for public input. Sure, that's fine. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jaima Wilder, and I live at 48 Pierce Lane. As many of you know, I'm sure all of you got my email that I'm requesting a public hearing to discuss the concerns that I've seen happen thus far in the year. I received your email that you're putting it on the calendar for February 16th. That is unacceptable to me in the fact that my children have already lost several months of their education, and pushing it off another month just kicks it farther down the road. I have been in contact with several members of the Board of Education from New Hampshire, and I will be contacting Diana Fenton, who is the lawyer who works for the New Hampshire Department of Justice, to find out if it's acceptable for you to wait that long without addressing my concerns. I have tirelessly worked and communicated in every way possible I can with administrators, and now I've emailed all of the board members. Each of, each one of you get to make your own decisions, and you all have a voice, and you can stand up, and you can make these things right. There are so many things that are going on that need to be addressed, and these kids need us to stand up for them. So I am asking you to do what is right and to have a conversation in your meeting today about moving the date forward so that we can get the public hearing done more quickly. I appreciate you listening to me, and I look forward to hearing that you've made that decision. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Chet Wosbowski, Farm Pond Lane. On the night of January 5, you, Mr. Corey, along with elected school board members and appropriate administrative personnel, were served with notice in an effort to educate you that you are making and enforcing law which is not a power, which is a power not afforded to you under our constitutions. Whether your actions were in error due to ignorance of your role as elected and hired servants in our constitutional republic, in other words, by accident, or if you are willful in usurping the power of making law only granted our legislature by way of our constitution, after the notice was served, you willfully extended your illegal laws, thus removing any possible claim to qualified immunity. Tonight, we are serving you with a notarized affidavit, a legal notice and warning, and assert the following. Please note, this is notarized, this is a notarized affidavit. It's a valid piece of legal evidence in a court of record that removes qualified immunity. Now quoting the affidavit, if hired servants or entities fail to correct the wrongs, provide remedy, fail to honor the Bill of Rights, fail to show where they believe they have constitutional authority to violate the people's rights, and fail to furnish evidence within seven days, they acquiesce by default that they are working to attack the people. This goes against their trust and denture and their oath to uphold the Constitution, which is a willful trespass against the rights of the people. Any man or woman who denies these claims are true, must rebut them under penalty of perjury in the form of an affidavit. You must show where in the Constitution you derive authority to make a mandate outside of or above what the New Hampshire Legislature makes. Any man or woman who decides to suppress this affidavit agrees to pay $1 million in addition to all legal fees the affiant may incur. Any public officials or private actors bound by contract to the New Hampshire Constitution, should they dispute the claims contained herein, agree to have these matters heard before an arbitrator of affiant's choice. Any man or woman denying the truth of these claims must rebut them point by point within seven days. Failure to respond means that by acquiescence, you agree that all of the above claims are true, end quote. So just to be clear, each of you, each of you who are named or CC'd in this notarized legal affidavit are each now obligated to respond to the evidence presented under penalty of perjury by affidavit, point by point, if you feel the constitutional evidence presented to you is in error, or face penalty under law if you continue to violate your oaths and continue to assume the role of our state legislature by which you usurp our constitutions. You now have been served. Our legislature has been notified, and they will receive a copy of this affidavit.
Next.
Hi, Barbara King, 15.
Barbara, just wait one second, so I can see you.
I'll take a check.
Just take them off.
For the school board meeting?
I'll take them off.
This is not appropriate for public input.
You can just leave them on the desk. We'll find, we'll hand them out.
Your two minutes, your time is up.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead.
I'm going to wait till you're done. Hi, Barbara King, 15 Barton Road, Hollis. And, you know, I watched the Hollis School Board meeting with this same scenario, and I want to know if our school board is safe. Are you going to drag them from their homes? Where's this trial going to be, Al? Is it going to be at your vineyard? Eric, is it going to be on the, is it going to be on your lawn?
Barbara, you need to address me.
Am I being personally attacked?
No.
Is this appropriate?
No, I'm asking questions.
Barbara, to us, thank you.
Okay. Here's what I'm going to say.
Barbara, just address it to us, please.
I am really sorry this keeps happening. I am very sorry all your hard work is being overlooked. I do think you need to ask bigger questions of people outside this room, because they're not saying where this is going to be held. You need to ask those questions, and our community needs to ask them for you. This is nonsense, and this is the point where there's, people can talk publicly all they want, but this is unacceptable. And I hope you've sought legal counsel. I hope you have contact. Now that they've come to you, like they did the Hollis School Board, I hope the school district takes it seriously and contacts people outside of even Hollis about this. This is not okay. You have done great work, and it is, people are not looking at what's right in front of them. And what's in front of them is that we led, I'm not even joking, the world in how you schooled our children last year, when I talk to colleagues around the globe, and when my husband does. You led the globe in keeping our kids in school. We had football games full of kids. We've had theater productions. We've had robotics competitions. It's all come back faster than anyone else. So I know you all know this, but the people who elected you, and the people will speak again in March, they elected all of you. The people that's being spoken about by this group, they are not the ones who elected you. So please keep working for us. And I'm very sorry this keeps happening. And just know, this town, Hollis and Brookline, is going to stand up for you when they need to, and you need to ask us to stand up to this more. Please ask for our help more, because everyone supports you who has kids in these schools, for the most part. I'm not saying everyone does, but don't tolerate this. Use our money for it. It's ridiculous. So that's all I want to say, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I'm Lori Miller. I'm 14, I live at 14 Fourth Street Drive. While I can say that I support the universal masking decision, I think it's more important that I voice my support of the school board and the administration for all your policies and decisions. Even though I may not 100% agree exactly on every decision, I know that you're considering input from our community and educating yourself with information from experts, and you're doing what you believe is best for our schools. I trust you'll continue to keep the education of students and the health and safety of everyone in mind going forward. With that said, I'm going to excuse myself and go watch the rest of the meeting at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Karen Bridger, 65 Buttonwood in Hollis. I'm not sure if you'll have time today, but I think you might want to consider having the co-op school board or the school district purchase cameras for your homes, just in case anyone might be trespassing. It would be nice to have some evidence. I don't like to see kind of open hostility that I just had to witness. I thank you very much for putting up with it, and I thank you very much for serving.
Thank you.
Michelle St. John, Orchard Drive in Hollis. And I'll just be brief. I know I've sent an email to the board, and not to all the administration, but I just want to reiterate, I have two students who are in the co-op, who, one has been there, this is his fourth year in the co-op, and the other, this is his, or actually, fifth year and third year. And I just want to say, my kids are extremely happy in this district. They are learning incredible things. I know that it will prepare them for incredible things. I support the board. I support the decisions of the board. I especially support the administration and all the stress, the healthcare staff that we have, and just keep doing what you're doing. I know that the majority may not be here for a variety of reasons, because of COVID mostly. They support you, and I know that they support you, and just continue doing what you're doing. It's really much appreciated by my family, by my children, by other people in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Garuba, 30 Minute Drive. Here to speak to my daughter, who's too afraid. Masks are damaging to my social, to my child, children's social and emotional development. I'm devastated by what this policy has done to my daughter. My daughter has a sensory processing disorder. The mask policy has significantly exacerbated my child's medical condition, contributing to severe anxiety and refusal to attend school, not in school again today. Last year, she was unable to comply with the mandate due to her medical condition. She was then subjected to emotional trauma when she was deliberately singled out and segregated behind a Plexiglas barrier without my knowledge. This subjected her to ridicule, humiliation, and embarrassment, and it's no wonder she's afraid to come to school. I'd like to read a statement that she has. "Wearing a mask gives me so much stress. It's very uncomfortable, and I don't get enough air. I can't function well with a mask. The mask gives me pain around my nose and my eye areas. I feel I just have to rip it off my face so it stops hurting me and rubbing my skin. I would appreciate you finding a way that I do not have to comply with this rule and help me get back into the classroom. I would never personally suggest that I know what's best for anyone else. Each individual has its own risks and benefits to ways of being part of society, but it's not the job of this board to make those decisions for those individuals. How can the school board make the judgment that it's okay to harm some for the benefit of others? It's destructive to the community to harm the most vulnerable children for the protection of others. The clear choice is freedom. Optional masking is the most respectful of all community members and their needs. Please do not harm my children further."
Thank you.
Joe Garuba, 28 Winchester Drive. So I have a couple of things to cover about the policies that are going to be reviewed, as well as the mask mandate that was recently extended. So we just heard of the kind of trade-offs that are made in these decisions, and these are important decisions, and I'm really disappointed in the board members for taking this responsibility from those whom we have elected to be our servants and to make decisions in the interest of our community, and pushing that off on Mr. Corey. I don't think it's, I don't think it's appropriate for those who are elected to serve to do that. Mr. Corey is not elected, and he's not accountable to voters. So if you guys feel that there's a mask mandate that's needed, I think you should, you should vote for it, and it should be something that gets a public hearing and is discussed, and the policy is determined. Because having Mr. Corey kind of make decisions the day before mandates are supposed to end based on what guidance he wasn't even given, that's not appropriate. So I think it's on you. The other things that I wanted to bring up, in the December 8th meeting, there was mention of students who are transferring into the, I guess, moving into the high school. And I just had some questions about it, because I'm not really clear. So the term is NECC. It's the New England Center for Children, and it looks like students are going to be moved into the high school. So my questions are specifically, how many students are covered here? Where are they moving from? And are they Hollis and Brookline residents? I'm just trying to come up to speed on this, because reading the minutes, it wasn't enough information to understand. The next thing I want to cover is the policy for reassignment of schools. So that's based on RSA 193, and I've been trying to follow it through the policy committee, but the meetings haven't, meeting minutes haven't been posted. So I read the policy today, and for RSA 193, it seems that it's the end of boundaries of public schools, meaning there are many parents from other schools in the area, such as Nashua, who would use the policy to potentially transfer their students under manifest educational hardship into our district. So the details of this policy that I read are just boilerplate taken from RSA 193?
Time is up, but we'll be talking about that policy later on tonight, so.
So I just had some points that I think need to be added to that policy, and in addition, to kind of follow up, I understand my time's up.
Yeah, your time's up, and the policy's directed by RSA, so.
I think you should, I would appreciate if you would vote to extend public hearing, because I only have a few more minutes.
I'm going to let this gentleman speak.
Thank you.
Hi, Brian Lovely and Totty Brookroad, Hollis. And first, I want to say thank you to all the school board and administration for weathering through these changing times, and I'm sorry for the personal attacks and displays that have been overly partisan or personal. And I wanted to say thank you for willing to adapt the mask policy to the changing times, and I just want to say thank you, and that we should be not, like, even if we disagree with you, they shouldn't be attacking you and threatening a lawsuit with very little time to respond. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, I'll give you, just give me your two or three questions, because I really don't want to, I don't want to extend this too long. So if you have two or three questions about the policy, just ask them, and then I'm not going to answer them, so.
Okay, yeah, if you just discuss them when you're reviewing the policy, I appreciate that. So RSA 193 allows for the denial of transfers into the district, and yet, because the policy is just a boilerplate of 193, there's no definition of how we evaluate transfers coming in, and what criteria are used to approve or deny them. So I think that's a hole in the boilerplate policy. The other thing that I had is it says, "All students shall meet the admission requirements of the receiving school district," but the boilerplate policy doesn't describe what those admission requirements are. So, and lastly, I would suggest that part of that policy be that the superintendent would make a report on the state of manifest educational hardships at the annual meeting. So I appreciate the extra time.
If we don't get to them tonight, I'll put them in the policy committee notes, and we'll talk about them in policy committee. Okay?
Thank you for the extra time. I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else? Okay, at this point, I'm going to close public input. I appreciate the respectfulness. At 6:30. Okay, so that leaves us to our discussion, right? No, principal and athletic departments, sorry. Sorry, gentlemen. I know you're here for a reason. I'm going to let you guys decide who goes first, and I assume we don't have a student council member tonight.
So I talked to Sam today, and she was unable to attend. She was looking to have Gabby attend, and I did not confirm the end of the.
They're probably home studying for those midterms. Patrick, I have you first. Do you want to go first, or?
I'll go first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leading up to the holiday winter vacation, we had our theme days and night games, which was about a week and a half before, which included different activities that students competed in during Rock. that students competed in during rock. The winning rock this year was Mr. Richard's eighth grade rock, who actually won a catered lunch, which they will get tomorrow. I think it's Qdoba or another.
Chipotle. Ooh, fancy. Ooh, so fancy.
My son is very excited.
Also, the organization, Personal Responsibility Organization Pro, came to HBMS the day before vacation. And they did some stress management, redefining success and perfection, and just getting students excited for the break. My favorite part of that event was the boast a classmate or teacher, which rather than roasting somebody, students got up and staff got up in front of the group of students and boasted each other, said compliments, which was well received by everybody, which is a really positive experience. This isn't in my report, but we are excited to announce that we are going to be adding some extracurricular activities starting February 14th, which is floor hockey and potentially a dodgeball club. That'll be about five weeks excluding February vacation, February slash March vacation this year. The spelling bee is this Friday morning. There will be 32 students to compete in the final round. And the winner has the opportunity to compete, represent HBMS on February 26th in Concord. Sea perch is coming back. I don't think they were here last year, but I'm sure most of you know that it is a STEM project put on by the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard and UNH. That's February 2nd and 3rd. We are welcoming volunteers. We're looking for some volunteers on the February 2nd and 3rd days. So if anybody's interested, please feel free to email me or the two eighth grade math teachers, Jake Richard or Katrina Hall. We're traveling to UNH February 11th and February 18th. And that's where students will actually get the chance to drive the rovers, I think they're called, underwater, which I'm looking forward to that. It sounds like a really great experience. Students also get to tour UNH, which I think is a very positive experience as well. We are going to be hosting a career fair Thursday, May 19th. So anybody that knows of any local businesses or any businesses that want to be a part of that, please start letting us know or having them reach out to us. Students will have a chance to work with Naviance before the career fair, which is a college and career readiness software that helps students with college and career planning. And just some important dates.
Thank you very much. Patrick, are there any questions for Patrick, for Mr. West? Oh, Tom.
For the career fair, would it be possible to reach out to our CTE partners, the high school groups? Because many of them have programs for middle schoolers. I thought that might mesh well in that environment when you've got them looking at careers and then potentially looking at course options they may have available to them to support those.
Sure.
Great suggestion, Tom.
Good idea.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I mean, it looks great.
I like the dodgeball being added.
Yeah, we're all chuckling at dodgeball.
I'm sorry, all I could think of is the movie.
Yeah, dodgeball, middle schoolers. It makes a movie. Thank you, Patrick. It looks like things are going well. And that's fantastic.
I think they could do a student board competition.
You do that, yeah. My experience of dodgeball was different than yours. You're tall.
I still have a middle school where most days are dodgeball.
Okay, Mr. Grizzzone, are you covering Mr. Bumpus as well?
I am.
I'll lead off with the athletics report.
Brian asked me to touch base on our winter athletic programs. Everything is up and running. Our ice hockey team, as well as our girls' basketball teams, both off to great starts. Unified basketball team, and I haven't heard the result. They played tonight over in Milford, a big game. Not so good, no? Okay.
It's a loss.
That's all right.
Good game.
So our girl swimming team, also performing well. Girls gymnastics, ski and cheer teams are all running. And we just learned very recently, our indoor track team, which was originally going to be kind of an intramural format this year, they do have a date for a track meet over at the Milford Dome. So that's exactly, they're going to have a competition. So that was a good update. The middle school, same thing. Middle school athletics are up and running. Midseason, mid regular season, girls and boys basketball team currently sit in second and third place respectively. Tri-county, in the tri-county league. Let's see, and the wrestling team. Wrestling is back in, I think, a healthy group this year. Brand new wrestler is not having had it last year. It's good to see the program back up. And Brian alluded to it in his last board report. But very excited to launch the HBMS Unified Basketball Pilot Program beginning February 9th and running up to the Friday before break. So bringing that program down here is pretty exciting. Any questions on Brian's report before I move to mine?
No, it looks great. Any questions?
So December was the month of performing arts. We had our first live guitar night for the first time in a couple of years. And like I noted, the musicians did not disappoint. They had a Rock and Roll Hall of Fame themed to the evening. So they performed before a live studio audience again with limited capacity, but it was very exciting to see them back up doing, in their element, doing their thing. We are expecting a two-night performance this coming May. And those dates have been set. So very excited to see what's to come with that. We also had our winter concert with all of our performing ensembles, concert band, choir, jazz choir, jazz band, honors choir, and honors jazz band, all performed numbers. And the last piece I wanted to highlight is kind of two-in-one. We did compete at the We the People competition, once again, up in Concord. In the first go-around, HB took home for the six best unit awards. And in the state finals, we took second place. So the students, I know some people here got a chance to take part in the practice panels at the high school. And, you know, continually impressed, not only with the depth of knowledge that the students exhibit, but also their passion and critical thinking around topics and on history and how they relate to today. And it's a, it's a proud moment knowing our kids have developed those skills and that knowledge through our, through our program. With Mr. Duval, who was named Teacher of the Year by our VFW for the state of New Hampshire. So he enters into the national competition, which will be announced in late spring. So Mr. Duval leads that AP Government Group and seeing his students in action in honor, very well deserved, so. I did want to make one note about the important dates at the bottom. Since this report went to print, both Patrick and I had the same event on ours. The eighth grade parent information night, which we will communicate with parents, we have not yet. That's actually going to be February 10th, not February 8th. So just to make a note. And it will be via Zoom. And we will send all that information out to the eighth grade parents leading up to the, leading up to that evening presentation. And I am open to any questions or comments.
Well, first, I want to let Mr. Duval know that the school board is very pleased with this news and wants to congratulate him as well. Or I don't speak for the whole school board, but I think we're all pretty much the same people in my mind. Are there any questions for Tim on anything? I congratulated Mr. Duval. Do you not agree with that? Would you like to uncongratulate? Are you having an issue with that?
Absolutely, we do.
Okay. Are there any questions? Tim, I just, I don't want to put you on the spot, but because I'm a parent in the district, and not all the board members are, we all get the information. But so there's been a little change in midterms, right?
Yes.
And that we've, you've taken the percentage that midterms are worth down a little. But I would like you to just explain to people who might be listening that that determination has always been administrative, correct?
That's correct. Yep. So the existing percentages, well, last year, there were, there were no midterms and no finals. The standing percentage awarded to quarters and to exams was, for a full year course, it was 20% per quarter and 10% for the midterm and 10% for the final. And we reduced the percentage for the midterm from 10% to 5%, thus making each quarter worth 22.5%. The thinking, the thought behind that, we had, I believe, at the time of the decision, 67, I believe, cases in the two weeks after vacation, which all include five days of absence, five days of quarantine, both with students being out and then also having staff out for COVID-related absences. It was creating for a very stressful and anxiety-producing situation for our students trying to prepare for exam, which only our seniors have done for a full year. Their freshman year, they took midterms and finals. And our juniors only took the midterm. So this is a new experience for most of our students. It was, I worked with student council. I worked with our admin leadership team, our building leadership team, our department chairs. And we identified this is a solution to maintain the assessment. The experience we still find, feel is very beneficial for the students to go through. But by reducing the percentages, we felt like it was a happy medium while still administering it. But taking into account all that our students are going through and all the stresses that they're under, given the world that we, they are in, so.
This thing called the pandemic, yes.
This thing called the pandemic.
Are there any questions on that? Are you done, Tim?
And then just to follow up, I didn't, I didn't explain the semester percentages. So for a half a year course, it was 40, 40, 20. So 40% for the quarters and 20% for the final. And we changed that to 45, 45, 10.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom has a question.
Just to follow on, onto that, what accommodations are offered for students who are unable to be in the building during midterm periods?
Yep, so we just, yesterday, implemented an after-school tutoring session that'll take place three days a week. We have NHS students provide peer tutoring. And we also have subject-specific teachers there on a scheduled basis, so.
But I have my kids who are half to quarantine, who can't be here.
Who missed the, who missed the exam?
Right, so in the after-school tutoring sessions, we'll be administering, it is a supervised.
So that's going to be after midterms?
Yeah, when students would return to the, be able to return to the building, they would be allowed to take the exam. And there may be scenarios within an individual circumstance that a teacher may make a decision, you know, to waive or excuse or take into account different factors for that individual student. But if a student misses.
So if there's no grade for a midterm, do the percentages then change?
If there's nothing that would go into it, yeah, I suppose the percentages would change for the overall course, yeah.
Great. That is the same as.
What brought that up is I work with someone whose students are now in that situation in another school district. And it became clear that there was not a defined practice because when the students were told different things by different teachers regarding the fact that they, they just got, they just found out this week they can't be in the building.
Yes. Students will definitely be allowed to make it up after the fact. And if an extension is needed, that's certainly something we can work with students or school counselors to do a great job of handling those situations on an individual basis if need be.
Thank you.
I was just going to add that for as long as I can remember, seniors can be exempt from final exams if they have an A in the course. And so the calculation is exactly the same in terms of, you know, the change in the weights.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to follow up with that.
Yeah, sorry, I mentioned.
Did you have questions? In general, thank you for your report. That was great, Tim. Things like, it looks like things are going well, as well as can be expected during times when things are crazy.
I just also wanted to comment, the after-school tutoring sessions and individual course content study sessions is part of our ESAR funding. So the grant was written to look at summer work, but also throughout the school with these types of opportunities. So it's what we sort of thought about ahead of time that we might come across this need. And here we have this need and we're making use of it, so.
So I believe those are the principals' reports. And now we are up to assessment data presentation and discussion, so. I'm going to, I will release you guys at some point, but I think have you stay here just in case there's questions specific to you. I can never find the lights.
Okay, so welcome to the co-op data presentation. So quickly, we have some results from the spring. So this is 2021 New Hampshire statewide assessment results. So for our seventh and eighth graders, they take the SASS in the spring in ELA and math. And then our eighth graders take it in science. At the high school, they participate in the school day administration of the SAT for 11th grade. And then our 11th graders also take science. But if you can see our, we have a really strong performance. The blue represents Hollis Brookline and the red is the state. So we maintain a very strong performance in ELA this past spring despite the conditions and the pandemic. Take a look at our math results. Also quite strong with HB in blue and the state in red. You're going to notice that our eighth grade math seems a little bit lower than seventh grade. And some of this has to do with just cohorts and understanding the cohort and how they've been performing historically. Last year's seventh grade cohort happens to be stronger in math. So that wasn't surprising that we saw that result. All right, so now we're taking a look at science. And we have eighth grade science, 11th grade science. This particular, when we hit eighth and certainly 11th grade science, it's always sort of up in the air in terms of which particular science the assessment's going to focus on because we teach our, our science courses as chemistry or biology or physics. And then our seventh grade is life science and eighth grade is earth, space, and physical science. So the science test is all-encompassing. So it may be something that kids haven't seen in a few years. So some years, we do much better than others. But overall, I was pleased with these results as well, especially given that there's a heavy focus on labs, lab-based questions. And given the pandemic last year, we adjusted our science courses based on what we could do without close contact with others. So another important question to ask as you're going through a pandemic is how are our scores changing or not changing over time? So over here, you have seventh grade. And we just want to look at grade seven. And so last year's seventh graders didn't take the test, or that we didn't have a seventh grade cohort take the test in 2020, but we did in 2019. And we had a seventh grade cohort take it in 2018. So a slight dip over time, but relatively stable. If you take a look at our eighth graders, our eighth grade cohort actually goes on the upward trend. Once again, we're also looking at the cohort and understanding that this last year's eighth grade class tended to be stronger in ELA anyway. So this result wasn't actually that surprising to me. If you take a look at mathematics, our seventh grade over the, you know, history, 2018, 19, and 21, very steady. And you can watch that the state definitely takes a dip. Our eighth graders actually tend to kind of go up and then stabilize despite the fact that our last year's grade eight cohort, as I mentioned, math wasn't their strongest point. Whereas our last year's grade seven group, it was a stronger math cohort. If you go back, one of, one of our towns, when these folks were in fourth grade, was the highest performing math cohort in the state. So it's not surprising that they end up doing well over time, especially during a pandemic. So definitely pleased with these results. And you can see that as we've heard in the news, the state results were on a downward tilt, whereas we maintain our, our performance. And I'm going to zoom in on the next one. But this just takes a look at grades three to eight over time, or sorry, relative to other districts that we commonly compare ourselves to. And folks ask, why do I pick these districts? Some districts are ones that we compare ourselves to regularly based on the size or based on performance. Sometimes we compare ourselves to other districts based on maybe salaries of teachers, CBAs. So different, the districts were selected for a variety of reasons. But if you take a look in grade seven ELA, in grade eight ELA, we show a strong performance relative to our quote-unquote competitors. You see that Wyndham over here beats us out a little bit. And then. You see that Wyndham over here beats us out a little bit, and then Bedford just ever so slightly edges us out in grade eight, whereas we take the lead in grade seven. Then you can take a look at math performance, but I'm going to zoom in on our co-op group. So in co-op, grade seven math, strong performance, and here, Oyster River edges us out ever so slightly in grade eight, less of a, not as great of a performance, I suppose, with Bedford beating us out a little bit, and Wyndham definitely a strong performance, but as I said, last year's grade eight cohort isn't a super-strong math cohort, whereas our last year's seventh graders were. So once again, not surprising, but solid performance and great to see where we stand. Down here is the state of New Hampshire, and we have Amherst, Bedford, Oyster River, Milford, Bow, Wyndham, and then the state. And then science, I maintain grade five because we only test grade five, eight, and eleven. If you wonder why there's a gap here, that's because we don't have Hollis or Brookline as eighth or ninth, eleventh graders, but we do have them when they're in grade five. So our grade eight students in science compared to the state, or all these other districts, and then our grade eleven students in science, once again, various performances, and that's partially based on what science they happen to have taken in that year and which questions they were faced with if they were in the same content area. For me, I prefer to take a look at our AP science results because that's testing what we were, the instruction that we were directly providing, and I think that's a stronger indicator of our science instruction. All right, so we also administer PSAT eight-nine to our grade eight students. So this is, over here, you can see it's administered in the fall of 2021, so this is hot-off-the-press information. These are our class of 2026 current eighth graders. So you can see very strong performance in both math and evidence-based writing compared to the national results, so very pleased with that. But once again, we want to take a look at PSAT data over time. We've been administering this since 2018, so what do we see? What trends do we note? So in our math, go up a little bit, down, and then up again. Once again, here is our strong math cohort, and this was our current ninth graders, that eighth grade that we were looking at for SAS, a little bit lower. So not surprising and pleased with this. All right, so looking at evidence-based reading and writing, that's what the EBRW stands for, this right here is our last year's eighth graders, our current ninth graders. They were stronger in ELA, and you can see that the results sort of demonstrate that, and these are our current eighth graders, still very strong, but a little bit less than last year. Once again, and that's based on the makeup of the cohort, but overall, you can see we consistently score very high. Okay, also hot off the press is our PSATs just administered in October, so this is our grade eleven students, and this assessment is taken seriously by our students. This is one that is used to determine possible National American Scholars in the future. If you take a look at our math and our evidence-based reading and writing compared to national, a solid performance there.
What's maximum score?
I'm sorry?
Is five sixty max?
Five sixteen.
No, I mean, possible.
What's the highest they can get? Is it six hundred?
I think for each.
For each component, for PSAT?
Six hundred, six hundred.
Yeah. So then we have school day SAT. So this is an interesting bit because last year, we administered the school day SAT twice because in the middle of a pandemic, let's do double the testing. So this is class of 2021 school day administration. So these are our recent graduates. They took the school day SAT as seniors in October, the same day we administered PSAT and PSAT eight-nine, and it was just testing for all. But so these are our seniors that took it last year, five sixty-four in math, five seventy-eight in evidence-based reading and writing, very strong performance, but keep in mind, they had additional six months of preparation to take a SAT in school day, and many of them took prep courses over the summer, so it's a strong performance. Like I said, it's a little bit older. Class of 2022 school day SAT, so this was administered last spring to our then juniors, now seniors. So here we have five sixty-one in math, five sixty-six in evidence-based reading and writing, still very strong performance, but this is more comparable data as this is when we are typically offering the school day administration. So how does data inform our decisions? So from my perspective, I take a look at these assessments, and I look for trends, and I look for how does possibly the implementation of a new program or a new curriculum impact the test results that we see. I take a look at the curriculum in terms of, do we need to rearrange units? Do we need to spiral through and strengthen a particular strand? And then that shifts over to the buildings, and they look at that big data, but they also look at, in PLC time, they look at common assessments. Okay, so if there was a strand that was particularly weak, let's say, or particularly strong, why was that? Let's take a look at those unit exams, and did we ask, did we strengthen this within the exam, within the instruction? Did we pull back on it? And try to evaluate that also from a team perspective. So if there were four teachers teaching the same concept and one teacher had extremely high results, what was it? You know, how did you frame that topic a little bit differently? How can we learn from our peers? So that's what we're doing with our PLC time, that's what we're doing with some of our early-release time that we've been granted by you for early-release days this school year. So I focus mostly on the state-level assessments, share that information down with the buildings, and then the buildings really focus on local and common assessment. We have sit teams that really examine possible holes or gaps or areas of particular concern for either individual students or cohorts of students, and then try to work with everyone with their individual needs. So that's it.
Thank you.
Questions?
Hey Gina, what does sit stand for? You said sit team.
Yep, the student intervention team.
Thank you.
Yes, Tom?
Thank you for the presentation and also the context. In general, while the results look really good, especially in comparison to some of our peer groups, it still is twenty-five to, according to a third of the students are apparently evaluated as below proficiency. What's the impact of that number of students in a, in a school district being characterized in that manner? Is that viewed as a failure of the test or an impending need for the students?
So there are a variety of approaches to that question, and of course, we're going to look at them. I will also say that last year's assessment in the spring, it required you to come into the building, and so we had many students that were still fully remote and opted out of the assessment. So we had a smaller cohort of students taking that, so that sort of skewed some of our results. But, back to your point, so we take a look at that as one piece of data. We want to know if there's themes, if it's a theme over time or for, is it just for a particular cohort? Then we look to see at local assessments. Do our local assessments match up to that? If we're looking at our SAS data, does our PSAT eight-nine data support the same quote-unquote weaknesses? And then what do we do? Because, you know, when we're looking at seventh graders or eighth graders, we still have four more years with them. So what are we going to do while they're at the high school to fill in any, if any, gaps that we see? So there's plenty of time for us, I mean, you know, fewer time as they get older, but plenty of time to get them.
But do you think that the threshold of proficiency is valid, meaning that if the assessment says it falls into, you know, you've got a scale of four, there's not a lot of, a lot of granularity there? But the question I have is, do we in fact believe that the students that are in that below proficiency, you know, ones that are really in need of remediation tend to be pretty obvious? But students that don't test well may be there, do we accept that characterization as less than proficient, or do we have other tools that allow us to make a more individualized, perhaps appropriate evaluation of need?
No, we absolutely have to use different tools, and I'll give you a good example. When the New Hampshire SAS is assessed, you go into three different buckets. Those three buckets become four, one, two, three, and four. So it's that middle bucket where you are either a two or you're either a three. And for example, for the reading portion, students have to write written responses, write an essay. In our younger grades, we often teach students to recycle the question and utilize that as a type of response. That invalidates the response for the computer-generated correction because it says that it's invalid because it's copied, and then they often get zeros on that portion. So if you dig down into it, and you're able to do it, when you look in from the administrator perspective, and this is what we had our teachers do last spring, when I asked them to look at all these sources of data and then share that with the next group of receiving teachers, I wanted them not to just take it a two or a three. I wanted them to say, what strand within writing was weak? Was it actually weak? Let's find another piece of evidence to support that it maybe wasn't accurate, or that maybe, yep, we do need to do some more work. So then utilize your classroom data, depending on what year it is, utilize your PSAT data, or if you're in the elementary, utilize your Ames Web Plus data to support specifically providing that next teacher. These are the things that we need to focus on because they're just under that proficiency, and we're going to bump them up. Or, you know what, I have nothing else to support this, potentially, maybe the student didn't care about it, maybe it wasn't their top priority to be performing, you know, at a high level in a state assessment, and that's, their approach to the assessment is also, has a huge impact on how they perform. So there's a lot of pieces there, but absolutely, that's what we did with those final days last June, and then in the beginning of the year, the teachers received that and said, okay, what's my plan now? These are the students I have, these are the focus areas.
So based on that level of evaluation, do you have an alternate characterization of our district's performance in terms of what portion of our student population is not achieving grade-level proficiency? And I'm not looking for an exact, but this is saying twenty-five to thirty-five percent. Do you have any estimate of how you would characterize that situation?
I mean, I would say that we have a higher percentage at grade-level proficiency, and certainly a much higher percentage that's far above. And I think that if you take a look at our school profile, those pieces of data will inform that. So our number of students who go off to college not requiring remediation courses, who are fully prepared. You know, and schools know, colleges know who they're receiving and where they're receiving them from, and have an understanding of the level of preparation or the level of preparedness those students are when they receive them, based on where they came from in our program. And we have a solid reputation. Doesn't mean we don't have areas to work on, but we definitely, you know.
So we're not kicking a third of our students out of here without the tools that should be.
We are good.
I think the other thing, Tom, is if you were to compare, say, Andy Corey on the state assessment and Andy Corey on the SAT, many times, it's a very wide disparity, and it's because many of our students see no purpose in the state assessment, and they don't take it as seriously as they do the SAT. So that is some piece of data that has been going on ever since we started state testing, and it's amazing to see the disparity, and you just ask it, you know, like, it doesn't have any purpose for me, you know, it's something.
There's none that they're aware of.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate seeing the numbers, and I really appreciate seeing how you guys are progressing, each little grade. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Gina, I was going to say, I'm not a big charts and numbers girl, but I really like the fact that you explain the thinking behind and how you're looking at this, and that you're not just looking at the numbers, but you're digging into a lot of the questions and that your whole team is working on that, so I do really appreciate that.
Well, thank you for giving us the time on early-release days and professional development days because otherwise, you just don't have that opportunity.
It's true. Good to know. Any other questions?
What's your theory on how we end up with entire cohorts that tend to be strong or weak in certain areas?
Some of it's DNA.
In the entire cohort?
It's just, it's just a mix of, it's just like you have, you know, a group that's a really strong group of musicians, and then the next year, it's a really strong group of athletes, and some year, it's just a really strong of everything, and you're like, wow, look at these, you know, so there's just, where they have.
I feel like that would be a really good sociology study of like competitive and people driving each other and interest level of groups.
Firstborn.
Dynamics. Yeah, groups with lots of firstborns, yep, interesting. Anything else? No? Okay. Thanks so much, Gina. Great job. Thank you. Cindy, did you have something? I thought I.
I was just going to say, I think, especially the newest data that was out there, I think it speaks a lot to our teachers and our students for what they went through last year, and they were still achieving fifteen point numbers. I think that goes a lot to our district and the kids and the parents that are involved in the students that are.
I do think it's interesting that the theory of the class of twenty-one school day SAT is that they might have done better because they had more time to prep, but I also think a lot of those kids at that point might have just been, you know, their applications and a lot of schools weren't even looking at it, so you don't know what their motivation was either. So, I mean, and they still did well, and I have a feeling some of them were like, whatever, I am not applying to a school that needs an SAT, because they weren't required last year from most schools.
True, and another piece about that is that it was a much smaller percentage of our students that took it because it was an in-person assessment in October when many of our students, you know, twenty-one percent of our students were remote at that time, so, you know, there's a lot of different nuances to all of these, but none of this would have been possible if we weren't in person five days a week with teachers willing to zoom in the room and, you know, just plug away day after day after day. So just a, to Cindy's point, strong thank you to all of our teachers.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Okay, so next up, unless, if there's no other further questions, next up is our revenue and expense report.
Hi. Linda.
So, looking at expenses first, out of our twenty-five point six million dollar budget, at this point, we're saying that we're not going to be spending about two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand of that. The four areas that are over budget are regular education, thirty-six million dollars, thirty-six thousand dollars over budget.
Phew, thank you for the question.
Sorry, making sure you're awake. Thirty-six thousand dollars largely due to substitutes. We're hiring a lot of substitutes now for staff members on long-term leave. We have quite a few co-op members, teachers who are out for extended periods of time. In the vocational program, we're twenty-four million dol, oh my gosh, oh my gosh.
You used to think in a millions.
Twenty-four thousand dollars over budget due to enrollment increases. We currently are sending students to Nashua, Milford, and Hudson School Districts, and we have a very strong, strong program. And then in the student support services, the thirty-two thousand dollar over budget there is largely due to the hiring of the network manager that Superintendent Corey talked about at the beginning, who we've hired starting in January. And then the last over-budget category is the school board category. This is due to, thirteen thousand dollars over budget due to extra advertising we've had to do for posting jobs and some purchase of audio equipment for the annual meeting in March. The other categories are all showing that we're going to have savings, and the one category in particular that has a large balance is the benefit line, where we're showing a savings of two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, largely due to, well, that's across-the-board savings in taxes, insurance, retirement, unemployment compensation across the board. So bottom line on expenses is we're showing that we're going to be saving two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand dollars. Then if we look down at the revenue section. Then if we look down at the revenue section, we also have a surplus there of $443,000. $122,000 of that coming from the special education aid, where we had budgeted $390,000 and received $512,000. Then the food service line, you need to look at those two lines together, the food service federal surplus of $392,000, and the food service sales line, which shows the negative $253,000. The difference between those lines is the food service, the 392,000 plus is the Department of Education giving us reimbursements, because all of our lunches and breakfasts are free again this year. And then that negative number, the food service sales line, is under budget, because that's our point-of-sale purchases, and that's just this year, it's for the à la carte items, since the meals are free. And then finally, that other category of the $180,000, that is the health trust surplus, gave us a distribution back to members for a surplus, and co-op received $230,000. The district portion of that that we keep is $180,000. The other part went back to employees. This month, we sent out checks to employees who got part of that surplus. So bottom line is, we have adding the expense surplus of $251,000 with the revenue, $443,000, gives us a total going back to unreserved fund balance, $695,414. And then if we take out the maintenance trust, $200,000, which we've put into Article Five on the proposed warrant, and the special ed trust warrant, Article Number Six, $25,000, and also take out the retained fund balance of $180,760, for total reductions of $405,000. Bottom line, projected fund balance at this point in time halfway through the year of And does anybody have any questions on those numbers?
Go ahead, Tom.
Just real quick, I'm curious why advertising comes out of the school board budget.
That's where, in fund accounting, I don't know how that all got set up, but it's driven by the auditing rules. I mean, they tell us where to put things. But that is where advertising falls.
Good to know.
So maybe the better question is, why is it called school board? That line, it maybe should be called something else.
Well, what else is in that line? And is that things like our legal...
All the expenses for the annual meeting are in that line.
Our stipends, I assume, our incidental costs.
This would be...
I'm wondering if there's legal in there as well.
School board stipends, yes, small amount. The budget committee secretary advertising school board expenses, school board fees, public hearing cost, the district treasurer stipend, negotiations, the audit fee is there. But that's all, we know those cost ahead of time. So most of that is, the budget matches what the expenses are.
Was, did that amount have a negotiation in it, or is that the year after the negotiation?
We don't have a negotiation.
No negotiation this year.
I'm trying to figure out what year we're in.
So we don't have a...
There's no negotiation.
But that's where it would fall.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Can I just add a clarification? So, Tom, you'd asked about the highest score. So for PSAT eight-nine, individual component scores range from 120 to 720 per math or English, and then for PSAT, it's 160 to 760.
What was that?
For PSAT for 11th grade is 160 to 760.
So the high's not 800, it's 760 in the PSAT in 11th grade.
And then 720 for eight-nine.
Yep, eighth grade, yes.
When did they take that?
Well, the SAT's still 800, but these are the PSATs.
Oh, PSAT, instead of 600 or something.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Linda, for all your work. I know it takes, it's a lot, so we really appreciate it, and we appreciate the support. Are there any other questions? It's very clean, and even I understand it, so that's great. That's great. All right.
Next, that's you, sir. Facilities update. Potential lease to address an aging ventilation system.
In your board packet, Kelly had put in four proposals to address our H-back and aging equipment at the high school. Part of this was also looking at what I would call dehumidification, or in some ways more of what I call commercial air conditioning, as we know it gets excessively hot in the last few years on the third floor. So Lance has worked with a vendor, who were using the same vendor in Brookline, just to get estimates and quotes to be able to attach real dollar amounts. So the four proposals that were provided to us, in option one, we would replace all our non-AC units. The estimated total cost of that would be $5,710,825, which would give you a lease payment for a 15-year lease of an estimate of $478,61. Option two is to replace all the oldest non-AC units, so that would be rooftop units from 1996 to 1998. So that estimated total cost would be $4,47,885, which would give you an estimated lease payment of $338,854. This misses a key third-floor unit that was kind of upgraded in 2000, which would mean that our floor in most need of reducing temperatures would not have the greatest ability to do that. Option number three is to replace four units that include most of the third floor and some second-floor spaces for $2,229,452, which is an estimate of $186,630. And option four is to replace two units that include some second and third-floor spaces. And in this one here, it also includes the electrical upgrade, because there would be some electrical work that we'd want to do in what I'd call the very first phase, which is included in all four of those, but I wanted to highlight it here. And those couple units, which would do some of the second and third floor, $1,252,567 for a lease of $104,854. When I reviewed these with Lance and have talked to Kelly, I think in terms of the options that I'm recommending the school board consider, would be options three and four. And there's a couple reasons why. Option three and four kind of align with what's going on across the SAU, because there are some dollar capital improvements in both being proposed in Hollis and, as well as Brookline. Number two is, we can't forget that we only have a 10-week summer. And it sounds great to do option one or two, but the reality is that would be over multiple years, and that would be earning some limited interest on the lease. I'm not sure it could justify doing the total amount. Also, there are a number of supply chain issues. We had to get a rooftop unit similar in Hollis, that's running about four to six months. So it's not a quick task at all. And then when you try to coordinate that with the required cranes to set these units and things, again, doing everything over a summer is probably not feasible. In terms of the other piece that I want you to keep in the back of your mind, is we're also reviewing enrollment. And we talked, I believe it was last month, about some educational components that Patrick and Tim had spoken to the architects around looking at our building space and where we were heading. And I think some of these, when I look at options one and two, would also entail some of the areas we'll be targeting, like the cafeteria and things like that, in the future. So when I look at options three and four, I think they offer us the, a significant bang for the buck. They get us started on the project. It would be a phased-in approach. We have used this phased-in approach for roofs, and that has gone very well, as we're now finishing up our roofs. And it makes for a manageable project. I also would say that potentially this summer, we would be coordinating three projects. We think it's doable, because we have the new facilities management position. And Kelly and I have been through a number of projects in the last couple of years, but there is a definite need to manage these projects and coordinate those. I'd be happy to do my best to answer any question on any of the options, and then when we're done that, I'll tell you how that kind of fits into what we're looking at for a potential warrant article.
Any questions for the superintendent?
I don't, I don't really have any questions. I know that at the budget meeting, Kelly had very briefly, because she had briefly brought up some of these numbers, and there was a lot of conversation about the concern about trying to split it. The main concerns were, you know, once you have a crane in here three or four times, it costs. And the other was, depending on how the systems were going, would a 2000 unit give you the full efficiency of a 2022 unit? So just, you know, be prepared for those conversations, or have Kelly prepare for those, now that you have a little bit more information to go to the budget committee next week. They just kind of, some of them felt like if you just explained it and said, this is going to cost us more in the long run to get the equipment in here, and maybe not have all these pieces work together, that that was their concern.
Right. No, and I absolutely see their concern. My caution is, potentially, we're looking at a $2.5 million project in Brookline. There's a real possibility of a $2.5 million project in Hollis, and if we went after the, all of it at once, you know, that's a significant tax impact across a very, I'll say, small pool, because, you know, we don't have that much commercial real estate. Where I think, when I look at it, if we did Phase Three or Four, Option Three or Four, and then when we came back to potentially do some renovations to the physical plant, that would be an ideal time to finish this project, which would probably mean Phase One, let's say worst-case scenario, because of supply chain and everything, two summers, and then we're gearing up to do something to the co-op buildings.
And it might be good for Lance to talk to that group. I don't know at what point, but just so that he can explain a little bit more in detail what he's thinking. But that was, it actually came up more conversation than we anticipated, because it was just a, it came at the kind of end of it, and we knew that we had not discussed it at this detail with the board yet.
Right. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So you felt like in that meeting, that a good portion of the budget committee was advocating for doing the whole thing at once?
Yeah.
Is advocating too strong of a word, or...
Yeah, I think advocating might be too strong, but I think they felt like if we explained the need and the reasons to the community, that they would understand that the longer you spread it out, the more it's going to cost. But to Andy's point, too, you know, how much can you get done in three months? So, but that was a little bit of a surprising conversation, that they were more concerned about the extended cost, not the, you know, but they don't see the whole picture either, because we're talking about a co-op budget.
Right.
So that's where some of it, maybe with Lance explaining it to them, would help.
Are there other questions? Tom?
If I understand this correctly, you're taking units that are currently heat-only and replacing them with heat and AC? Is that correct?
Correct. The heat-only units would be at the end of their useful life, and through, I'll say, a relatively efficient process, we can add the dehumidification slash AC process, which will alleviate, I'd say, on a bad year, about 20 days on the third floor are very difficult from an educational standpoint. On a good year, it's probably cut in half.
Do either options three or four address that key third-floor unit?
I will have to follow up with Lance, but I want to say that option three gets us almost all the third floor done, and a significant portion of the second floor. If you asked me tonight what my recommendation would be, from what I know today, I would probably say option three.
And then the question that I have is, if we were to have a successful energy project in the co-op, either or both buildings, that involve things that brought down our electrical costs, would that change the selection from what is being proposed, or would the same units be considered? Are they, for instance, are they modern heat pump technology and things like that?
Yeah, my understanding is the units that we're proposing, if we were to elect to go to solar at some point in the future, just like at HPS, could be tied into solar.
But they wouldn't be interfering with the ability to install the solar?
No, no, because the solar would have to go around the current rooftops if you chose to use the roof. If you chose to use field space and do more of an array, I don't think there would be any of that.
Complete non-issue. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, we could let them go home.
Okay, Patrick and Tim, I think we're all set, unless you want to stay for policy.
Any questions on the program?
Oh, you have the program of studies, so you might want to stick around for that, I guess, yeah. But Patrick, I think you're, unless you want to stay for program of study.
I'll let him take that one.
Hey, Andy, what kind of interest rates are we getting for Enus' leases at this point?
You know, I'll have to check again, because I saw the bond rates just the other day, because I was looking for Brookline, and the bond rates were very, very strong in our favor, you know, still. And usually leases have been running historically, what we've been doing is seeing about a quarter to a third or a point higher, and that's because you are able to bank it. The other thing, I just want to make sure everybody understands, we're choosing or recommending a lease based on it's all equipment, and it kind of aligns very nicely, and a lease requires the simple majority to pass versus the bond that requires the, I believe it's three-fifths now, even at annual meeting.
Yeah, I'm just afraid we're running, like, this kind of, I guess, goes to the point of maybe the budget committee is, if we can make it even through this annual meeting cycle with existing rates, we're going to be lucky. I think we're going to see a fairly significant multiple increases in the interest rates, which is going to eventually impact all of these. So it may be a good time to take, you know, maybe our last chance. On the flip side of that, we've got all kinds of supply chain shortages and the inability to get the equipment, so it's...
This is one of those times where...
It's a delicate walk.
You know, if we were, at Tom's point, at the SAU meeting, if we were a K to 12, we'd be looking at one bond or a lease for all three projects, which would be an ideal time to be going out, because of what the interest rates would be. But if we, you know, we try to pass all three at top dollar, just to give you an example, we started at Brookline to do the entire needs of their school district, was about $18 million, 11 for RMS and 6 for CSDA. And we're moving forward with a $2.5 million bond to address the absolute necessities, and a $1.5 million contingency article in case the $2.5 million doesn't pass. So it's also just being cognizant of, you know, the tax rate and trying to meet the needs of the people, and how much we can accomplish as a, as an administrative unit overseeing multiple projects in one summer.
I can say that for Hollis, with the potential bond, which is not a lease, the 10-year was 1.5 percent, and the 15 was two, but that was a high estimate, so...
Are there any other questions on that? Okay.
Review of the draft warrant articles is next. Is that you two?
Yes. In the packet, I had provided, Kelly had provided a copy of the draft warrant article, just to kind of get information out. I want to note one change, and I handed out clean copies to the board, but on Article Three, the dollar amount that is underlined is correct in the material I handed out, and that would be $25,278,502. And that is the operating budget for the schools.
Do you know where the number that's in the packet came from?
Yes, Kelly told me this afternoon she just copied it from the wrong place in the information. And we, one of the Budget Committee members provided her with the correction. So that's why we also try to produce the draft warrant article and make sure our mistakes don't matter. Article, obviously, the first thing would be the, those looking to seek school board offices. We are now accepting and giving out papers to run for those offices. You can stop by the town or the school SAU building and we'll get those to you. And I believe filing open today is to the 28th.
It's the next Friday.
Yeah, to next Friday. Article One is what we were just talking about, which the Budget Committee will be discussing further. It will be coming back to set a final amount for ultimately the public hearing. We can obviously go into the public hearing, get public input, and change that dollar amount as well. So nothing is finalized until we go through and approve those to move them with positions to the actual warrant, which you as a board would sign off on. Article Two is the collective bargaining agreement for the Hollis Education Support Staff. It's for fiscal year '22-'23. Its estimated increase is $88,523. Article Three, again, is the warrant article. I made the dollar change. Article Four is the SAU budget, of which $1,079,47 would be the co-op's responsibility. I was, just as a side note, I was speaking with Mr. Thompson, former Assistant Superintendent here, who went over and started their SAU in Hampstead. So I just asked him, they have two buildings, they have about 800 students, and then a group of students who tuitioned to Pinkerton Academy. And I asked him, what did it cost his SAU to run? And just for the two buildings, it was over $1.1 million as a brand-new SAU. So when I looked at our overall costs, I think it lines up when you're managing three districts because there are so many requirements from the state, that you have to have a superintendent, you have to have a business manager. Obviously, you need accounts receivable, accounts payroll, so it's not just an office for education. It's the actual business of HR and everything else that goes along with operations. Article Five is the $200,000 to be added to the Facilities Maintenance Expendable Trust. This is something that we have been utilizing for a number of years successfully, working with both the Budget Committee and Kelly. We have a nice CIP list that Lance is taking over and coordinating. And then lastly, Article Six is $25,000 to be added to the Special Education Expendable Trust. I also passed out to each board member, and we have copies at the SAVU, if anybody's wondering, we received four petition warrant articles. The first one, so people at home know what has been provided, to provide the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District to adopt and implement a policy to ensure that each textbook or other assigned book used in the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District, as well as a copy of all professional training materials, administrative materials, and staff of the district paid with school district funds be made available to, to the public at the Hollis School Library and at the Brookline Public Library in hard copy or electronic form organized by grade or teacher. So I understand the intent of this. I'm not sure what position in the SAU would take care of getting all this information to the librarians. I'm not sure if the librarians in the public libraries are aware of the article. I just wanted you to be aware of that. That will be, because these are in early enough, that will be part of the warrant article that we post and discuss on the budget hearing night, so that we can take positions on that. The second article by petition to shell the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District the SIS authorization under RSA 198:4-B2, so that the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District can turn 100% of year-end, the year-end unassigned general funds to taxpayers. Again, that will appear on our public hearing on our night. That is a simple majority vote on that.
Can I ask a question about that?
Oh, yes.
Does that mean that, that you wouldn't be able to fund maintenance trust funds or special trust funds? Special education trust funds? If this passes, then unassigned funds get sent back to the taxpayer before we fund funds that may have been approved by taxpayer?
My understanding is the warrant article, which the legislative body could approve, would be to use money to the unassigned fund balance prior to it being returned. That is a question we've had into our attorney just to, to make sure my interpretation is correct.
So you could fund it, you think? You think you can fund it?
I think what it addresses is that retained fund balance, where we got the-
After we funded other funds.
That $180,000, for example, that's being proposed.
Correct.
I understand.
I think that's what it is.
Yep. The third one is adopt SB2 ballot form voting. Shall we adopt the provision of RSA 40:13, known as SB2, to allow official ballot voting on all issues before the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District on the second Tuesday in March? That will be noticed in the paper. It will be noticed as a separate hearing on the night of our budget hearing. So there'll be three actual postings in the paper. There'll be the posting if we move forward with a lease or bond, so there's public notice on that. We would close the lease or bond public hearing. We would move to SB2, make folks aware of that. Close SB2, go through all the other articles in the warrant, which would be the other petition articles as well. And then both the Budcom and school board could take their positions that night. And the final one is require Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District warrant articles with tax impact to state the estimated tax impact. They provide an example in, in the packet. This is something that has been discussed at the Budget Committee on numerous times. And there's a concern because we're estimating taxes now and we don't know what revenues will be or a host of other issues. And to say something's going to cost 50 cents to do and then have a, the reality become a dollar 50 is something we're all very concerned about. So those are the four petition warrant articles. Kelly, Celie has provided them to the, the school board clerk and we will be taking the necessary steps to get all that posted. The only one we still have open, as I would say, would be anything else that comes by citizen petition or us inserting a dollar amount if we decide to go forward with the lease.
Andy, thank you.
Yep.
Some of you weren't here at the last meeting and it didn't, it isn't reflected in the warrant articles. But I asked a question about funding the portion of roof expenditures for the upcoming year directly either in the budget or out of retained money, but effectively funding it real-time with the money now and reserving the use of the maintenance trust as this savings account, as opposed to putting it, putting it through this process with, with two possible negative consequences. One is that it gets voted down and we don't have that money to do what we definitely want to do in the upcoming year. And two, making that maintenance trust look like a means of skirting disclosure of actual near-term budgets. I don't think that there was categorical opposition to it. I think it's more of a timing issue. But I will be raising this question again at the hearing, so I want to make sure people are caught off guard in saying, why are you bringing it up now?
And Tom, I did bring that up to Darlene again. I thought she was going to reach out to you, but I gave her that information at the last meeting because you had questioned it last year as well. I'm not sure that you were on it. You both had the same interpretation, so I think the best thing is for you to speak directly to her too because Kelly wasn't sure about the question that you had. If it gets voted down at the meeting, then can it still be spent out of the operating budget? But I did speak with them at the last meeting on that.
Thank you.
The other thing that the board could consider, based on Linda's revenue and expense report, you could opt that you were just going to do those two sections of the roof out of this year's budget and just encumber that money through a board vote, similar to what you did last year when you decided to do the paving. Because you're going to most likely have a budget surplus and could do that now, encumber that. Kelly and Linda would do the accounting of that. And then you know it's going to get done and could potentially decide not to put it into maintenance trust or bump something else up in maintenance trust. So it's just another option for us to consider over these final, probably, two months of the budget season.
Yeah, like we did last year in May or June. We could make a decision based on that.
Correct.
Any questions on that? Good. Okay, great. Moving forward, we have, to see what action the board will take, let me get my outline, sorry, on the program of studies. So we're at deliberations now? 7:42. So the first order of deliberations is to see what action the board will take regarding the approval of the high school program of studies. So I, we reviewed that last month and we got a good review of that. It's in our packet again. I need a motion to, we'll talk about it after the motion is on the floor. Motion to approve the program of studies for the Hollis Brookline High School as presented. Moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Cindy. Are there any questions or comments for Tim since he stayed for this? Great job on the program of studies, Tim.
No, thank you.
I know it's stupid, but we are changing all the names and you'll get some recognition on the program study.
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, does it currently not have our, our current administration?
Not currently.
Okay, so we should probably change that. Could we do that?
No, I'm assuming you were, but I just had to say it.
All questions, all forward to Rick Barnes.
I have a, a question and I'm not sure where it belongs. But Mr. Garuba talked about-
He did talk about that.
N-E-C-C, was he thinking of the wrong thing? Was he talking about the NCC stuff, or?
No, I think he's talking about the correct thing, but he's got two different things going on at the same time. N-E-C-C is a self-contained special ed program that we have at the middle school for a select group of individuals.
Okay, so it's not this, he was using the wrong definition of the acronym.
Right, and it's moving to the high school because it's a program that follows students. So it's, it's been with us for a number of years. It's nothing new. It's just, it's similar to FINUS, except this program would move with students. If, if we have a need in the future, we might have one at the middle school and one at the high school programming. It's just one of those things we've done for more in-house programming to meet the needs of a variety of different students.
Thank you for bringing that up though, because that's a nice opportunity for him to explain that, so thank you. Okay. Any other questions on the program of studies? All those in favor? No opposed, so 6-0, 0. Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
My pleasure.
Okay, so now we move to the lease article. I'm going to read the motion as I have it in front of me. I have a feeling, um-
Is it in our packet?
Can we look at the packet? Can we just look? Because before we make the motion, we kind of need to decide which one I should, we should move.
Oh, we're going back to, to that, to?
Right.
I thought there was more.
There, there is, but if we're going to put a notice for a public hearing, I mean, you can hold the public hearing and ultimately decide not to move forward. But we need some action by the board that moves it forward so Kelly can post it and at least provide a dollar amount to the article to the community, even if you decide at the public hearing that we're not going to move forward, if that's fine.
So this just is a vote to put it on the, on the warrant for the public hearing?
But we have to pick a dollar amount.
Right, we do, we do. That's what I'm, but once we've decided that at the public hearing, the board could vote to not recommend it.
You could vote not to recommend it, you could vote to take it off the warrant.
Okay, so we could still take it off the warrant?
And you could change their dollar amount.
So, I, before we make the motion, though, we kind of need to look and someone needs to throw out which dollar amount would be the best, or? It's back on page-
No, no, this, this is-
It's just way back there. It's way back there.
29.
Tim, you're good. You've got, right. I mean, you can stay. I love having you, so. I know your recommendation, Andy, is basically, I, I'm hearing from you that the recommendation that, your favorite, would be number three?
That's where I think, when I look at the overall, what's going out there for SAU from a dollar standpoint.
And an ability to do it. Is that correct?
I would say and an ability to do it and get it in and things like that. I mean, we could end up doing it and not having you to see it by August.
Can I, can I ask a different question? Can we propose a warrant article with a not-to-exceed amount for, for the monetary value without specifying the discrete manner in which it's spent? Or do you have to say, you know, we'll say that it's for replacement of rooftop units to incorporate cooling, but not say it's going to be these units and those units and the other units?
I don't think that's what the, the warrant would say, though. I think the warrant says finance the acquisition and installation of energy-efficient cooling equipment at the Hollis Brookline High School to replace aging equipment.
Okay, but-
Bring comfort to staff and students. That's the warrant.
But so my point is, the, the question, we don't have to pick one of these options.
We just have to pick the dollar, right, right.
A dollar amount, and it doesn't have, and it doesn't have to be one of these dollar amounts on this, it does not.
You could raise it or lower it or whatever, so.
What, what you're trying to do is tell voters what the dollar amount is and what you're thinking of doing.
Right, what you can, what you might be able to get for your money.
Right.
So the way the motion is, the way the motion was crafted by Dawn, is, or whomever crafted the motion, is a motion to include on the warrant an article authorizing the school board to enter into a 15-year lease purchase agreement to cover the costs associated with option blank of the proposed multi-phase energy enrollment expansion project. So it's referencing this option, but you could change it to an amount. You don't have to read it that way. You can change the motion.
No, but my, my point is, does it talk about the total amount?
It does not in the motion, but you could make, it should in the warrant.
Well, and I think the reason Dawn didn't do it in her motion was because when you pick an option, it was, it has an assigned dollar amount.
Right, so we could just-
But it's an, but it's only an estimate. That's my concern.
Right.
So I, I think that we, if we're going to make a motion, we should make a motion for a dollar amount.
Not to exceed.
Not, not an option. And then if, if we feel that-
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
And that's fine. And then, as you said, the dollar amount doesn't, he could, with that dollar amount, you could end up replacing only three units or five units, or you could change what you're replacing. So, yeah, I agree with you, Tom, completely. I just don't-
And it only specifies what the total amount is, not what the lease payment would be, correct?
It looks like in the warrant, it's a-
I think you have to put an estimated year one because that's what you're going to be billed.
It says the sum of, for payments due under the lease.
So in the warrant, it says it, but in the motion, it doesn't. So the motion is we approve to put it on the warrant, then the warrant gets crafted and then at the public hearing, we can change the line if we had to.
So, so do we, does the, will the warrant article lock in both the amount and the payment, or just the one-year payment?
The one-year payment, I think.
It locks, well, if it's a lease, it locks in the payment.
Oh, the payment forever, okay.
Because it's the same over the 15 years.
So what happens if we pick an option, has a dollar amount, and between now and whenever it can be executed, interest rates double? Do we only get to borrow half as much? Or, you know, or do we, or do we?
You get to go as far as the money will take you.
But as far as the lease payment will take you, not as much?
Right, the money allocated for the project. And remember, it goes before the legislative body and it could be changed on the floor as well.
I'm not concerned about, I'm concerned about the, the time that may lapse between-
Yep.
The time it's approved and it's-
And when the expenditure may occur.
Well, as soon as the vote occurs, that's when we go right out to secure the lease with bond counsel. And we usually lock that lease in.
So you start, it, it doesn't initiate when you start taking money?
No, no, we, we have to go through the bond, bond lease process, which we'll, we'll start.
But I mean, can you go through the bond lease process before you're ready to spend the money?
Well, we don't go through the bond lease until we have approval from the voters.
I understand that, but you get approval in March.
Yep, we, we would be starting in March.
You get the April, in April, you get the lease, but you can't buy anything until September.
That's fine. The lease rate, interest is locked in when we do that.
Okay. Okay.
At the beginning.
Okay.
So in the meantime.
What, how much do people have an appetite to spend?
I lost my thing.
Andy, how many total units are there?
I want to say, for some reason, six jumps out to me, but I.
Six, I was saying fifty-six.
I, I want to say it was six, yes.
Okay.
And, and the size of the six varied.
So.
I was going to say, there's a huge jump in cost.
Yes.
Sorry, from number three to number one.
Yep.
For only two units.
No, it sounds like number one is six units, number two is five units, number three is four units, number, if, if that's the case. So the difference between one and two is only, is that third floor unit, which apparently is 1.7 million dollars.
Seven million dollars for one unit?
That's what it's implying.
Well, you have, you have costs for electrical upgrades for these units as well.
But that's the incremental cost of adding one more unit is 1.7 million dollars between one and two.
And it has to be tied in to the other units. It can't, it can't be freestanding. So what I understood from Kelly's conversation, they're still going to have to get tied in somehow. It's not going to be just one unit stuck up there by itself. It still has to go through the other. I think some of them start in the basement, first floor, it has to be loaded up.
So that third one.
Yep.
So wait, number four is replacing two units, number three is replacing four, so it's two units.
And number two is taking five.
But remember, he said some of the units are different sizes and some of the units.
Number two is five and number one is six. So five, two to one, going from two to one increases the total cost by 1.7 million dollars and it adds supposedly one unit.
Right?
It's, it's the unit, it's the, any upgrades to duck work, it's, you know, so.
Yeah, but, but, but it gets you that one more unit.
Yep. And I mean, if you wanted to say, to get out there and pick a dollar amount of, say, two and a half million, just to pick a dollar amount, then what I can do is I can then send Lance back to the consultant and say, okay, now that we know we're moving forward with the lease, tell me exactly what we get for this dollar amount.
What's the best way to spend this money?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, I think you're right. There's something that's funny about, because I'm almost wondering if three and four doesn't include that. I'm wondering if what is this consistent with two, three, and four is it doesn't include that third floor unit?
Yes, yes.
Right, right.
But, well, then why would we want to pick two, three, or four?
Well.
If that's the key, if, if that third floor unit is the key.
I think that this note is just saying what's different between these two. It was not saying that this one is more important. It's just differentiating between these two.
But you're saying if we pick something tonight, then we can still change it before the March meeting.
Yes, I mean, you have.
We're going to have more conversation.
You have up until when you sign the warrant.
This is one.
To change the warrant.
There must be a monster in this thing.
We're still in the, you know, that phase where until we have the public hearing and you take your positions and then you sign the warrant, then we're locked in.
So in my thought process, I would go with the larger number because we can always be adjusting it down once we get more conversation and.
But how larger? Like 5.7 large?
Conversation from public hearing, then we can still adjust it.
So are you thinking 5.7 larger or are you thinking 4.4?
No, one. The whole, I mean, if you're, if you can reduce it at any time between now and the final signature, I would like to have more input than what we have right now tonight.
Yeah, I, this, this, this is incomple, like, this is not enough information to make a decision on. Like, I don't understand this.
And I guess my question is, has there been any cost analysis in terms of how efficient these run with all new machines and what that would cost versus some old, some new?
And that's what came up with the Budget Committee was, you know, if you tie a brand-new unit into something that's 20 years old, what are you really getting?
Right.
So, I mean, my suggestion would be go to the higher number. We have time to make those adjustments. We have time to hear other people's conversations.
Put 5.7 and we go to the hearing and deal with it then, with, with more information.
And talk to, but, I mean, the Budget Committee meeting is next week, you know, so I, I think again, we should, I mean, it's, it's a dollar amount, so they're involved. So I think we should have some more conversation with them.
When you can't answer anything.
I don't expect that we're going to end up there, but I don't know why we can't start there.
Okay, I have too many, I'm listening to Cindy and, and people over here. So Cindy's finished and then Tom and Liz, you can both have a chance, but the side conversations are making me crazy. Go ahead, Cindy.
So my suggestion is the 478, 061 lease payment until we have more conversation, until we have to get to the final signature.
Okay, that's Cindy's suggestion. Liz, what were you saying?
I agree with Cindy.
Okay, great. Tom?
I, I would go with a very low number for two reasons. It's a placeholder just to create in a warrant article. The optics of us putting forth a really large number that none of us can rationalize or defend at this point in time puts us in a very precarious position with the public. That's number one. Number two is, I don't like having a default number in there that, that's, that is so large. I could, someone, someone's going to have to really convince me that we should be spending $5 million on AC equipment at this point in time with all of the unknowns that face, that we face for the next 15 years. So if our sole goal is to put a number out there that we can then amend to be more accurate, I would put a small placeholder number rather than a large.
I would say that we should just go with the recommendation of, of number three, which is 2.2, which we can still amend once we have more information. So that, it says here, replaces four units, that includes most of the third floor and some second floor spaces. We need more information on that. I completely agree with you, Liz. We need to know what that means, how much these units are, all of that kind of stuff, so that we can understand why there's a discrepancy, what the difference is. Why is it going up to 4 million? But we can't just assume that it's one unit or two units. It, I mean, we can count through the units, but we don't know how much each unit is. Units are different prices, I assume. So I think going with the recommendation kind of splits the difference. We have the 2.29, the number that's right there. We put that in there. And then we have the same, the same argument that Cindy's making. We can change it at the, at the next, at the public hearing. It's the most authentic number because it's what would be the, the thing that we want to happen the most. It fixes, it says it includes all of third floor.
No, it says includes most of the third floor.
Most of third floor. It seems like it includes most, more of the third floor than number four does. So I would say put that number down. Although, I will vote for any of them. I, I think it's important to put it out there and have a public hearing and have people come and tell us what they think.
Is it more difficult to put a really low number and then all of a sudden be adjusting up by $3 million, which is.
Uh-huh. That's true.
Put a higher number and adjusting down. I mean, visually, as a taxpayer, you look at that, you think, great, what are they throwing at us now?
Well, it's, and I think you pulled the wool over ours because you put a low number in. I, we didn't, but we were concerned about a million dollar, a 1.2 million dollar lease with $104,000 lease payment. And then you showed up at the, and we didn't go to the public hearing because we weren't concerned about it. And then they moved it up to, you know, 478,000.
It's a valid point.
And we would have come out for that. And I got to tell you, if the public could come after me for budgeting too high for air conditioning units in the high school, I would enjoy that conversation. That would be a delight.
You still got the time between the hearing and the meeting. The meeting's when they're going to come out.
But I think Liz makes a really good point. Whatever. The point is, if we can talk, start like actually having a conversation with the public about the business of the school and educating our students and providing a healthy environment for them, that'd be a great conversation. Because I'm pretty sure that we're all here and we all have those things in, in our mind and we want to be able to educate them and keep them safe. And if we all get sued a million dollars or fined a million dollars apiece, it'll be really easy. That'll be 6 million. We'll have plenty of money in order to put the air conditioner units in because I don't have any, they're ideal where that money would be coming, going to.
So can I just get a sense of the board? If you, if we go for the 5.7, I mean, that's going to trigger a reaction in the community in some ways, but you're right, Liz. Then people will know that this is the max and they'll come out and, and potentially come. We can still lower it. I kind of do agree that although Tom's optics idea is better, it's better to put it out there, like this is how much it could cost, and then have people come versus.
And we've heard from the public, there's been a good portion of the public during the pandemic, talk about concerns over our HVAC systems, making sure we have adequate ventilation. I mean, I think there's actually a public health movement right now to do something about these units. And there probably wasn't five years ago. We would have heard from the Yankees that they, we went to school without air conditioning. Those kids can go to, without air conditioning too. But there's other reasons that are being stated for wanting to make sure that we have adequate ventilation in the school.
So I just need to.
If there ever was a time, well, you know what I'm going to say. I'm going to be with Cindy and say 5.7.
Why, why would you want to put forth a number that superintendent has said potentially jeopardizes other, other stuff in the district as well?
Well, I mean, I, I totally understand, but we are the co-op and we are, our buildings are the ones that are, you know, getting kicked down the road every year. And I understand the taxpayers have to make up a decision. And if they want a decision and they want to look at the ventilation system at the high school, we are a co-op board. I get that it could affect all of our taxes for all three districts. And I don't hold, you know, I understand Andy's point from it, but we do do this a lot. We look at all the other districts and we say, oh, we're not going to do that this year because, and we're a co-op. I mean, that's just the way I feel about it. And this ventilation system thing has been going on for a long time. I do think it has a lot of, you know, feed right now because of the fact that people are worried about the COVID. And I think, I think the ventilation has gotten more noticed now in the last two years than it ever has. And people are concerned about it. And this may be our movement. I don't know. But I don't think that we can say a low number and then go high. That's just my opinion.
I am concerned about, you're right, the, the going low. What do you think, Krista?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going back and forth on it. I.
And me too.
I, I agree that going low, starting low and going higher is, is really difficult. I, I struggle putting a $5 million bond out there this year, but I don't think it will be a $5 million bond. And I just don't want it to look like we're, like, I don't know. I just don't want it to look like we're throwing things out there. If we do that, because we can go down and we're all anticipating going down on it based on what people say, then I say, well, why don't we just go for the three? But, but you're, I mean.
Could you be convinced?
But you guys are right. I mean, Cindy's saying, the Budget Committee, what if they come and say, you know, this seems silly to just do part of it, not all of it?
Could, could, those of you who advocate for the highest number, could you be convinced that that's the right number?
Yes.
Well, I actually could because I think what, I mean, I, I, I am concerned about what the voter will do, of course, always. But honestly, if, if you do it all, and I am, I'm concerned about two things. Whether or not it'll pass and the amount of work and time and effort it would take to do so much. But I do think in all things, when it comes to construction and projects, it's better to try and do it at once because you do, there's a cost savings there. And putting it down the road, it's, like you said earlier, it can extend the cost. So I could make a case for it, but I don't want to overwhelm the S A U with a, with a huge project, you know, so.
Well, but we're in a different position than we have been in the past. We've got a facilities director.
That's true.
One. So we should be staffed for these kinds of projects. And if we're not, then we've got the wrong staff in place. But we, we've hired, we've gone to the voters and we've said we need that extra person at the S A U because we need to be able to manage our facilities better. We have that person, so hopefully that person is capable of managing this project. I think we have a variety of factors that make this maybe, maybe the opportune time, you know, the COVID thing, the interest rates are low. They're not going to stay low. I, and I think that multiple, you know, times when we're interrupting the school in order to do the same sort of construction project. And, and I think we have to, and Cindy made this point pretty well, and I just want to stress it, we have to stop looking around the other two districts to see what they're doing. And we have to govern what's right for these schools and these students. And because this is what we're elected to do. We're not elected to make sure, I am certainly not elected to make sure that the Brookline tax bills are, you know, in line with the Brookline taxpayers. I am here to advocate for the Hollis students and the Hollis Brookline co-op. And I think that, you know, we have to think about it like that. We have a duty to these kids. The second thing is, because of the type of project this is, put it before the voters. If it passes, it passes. If it fails the first year, the kind of project we can, we can pass on and do it the following year. We've had other projects that were not, you know, we couldn't pass off for another year or two. But this is something I think we could take the chance on, that it might pass just like this. And we might be able to take, handle the entire building at once.
Can I ask a question? Does, do we have any historical or rough estimate of what, I just keep losing the dollar on, what $500,000 works out to, what are the magnitude for tax impact?
I think that would come from Darlene.
Darlene, Darlene is the one that would, could pull in off.
I mean, we have an opportunity at the public hearing to, to discuss as a, as a board, right? Like, that's what we, as a board with the Budget Committee.
Well, even next week, if they see this number, Darlene will be able to pull some numbers together fairly quickly.
Fifty-three cents a thousand or five, $5 a thousand? I don't, I just don't remember what the, what those kind of.
Well, here's my only fear, that we put the 5 million on, it gets, put on a warrant, it gets actually put on, and it doesn't get through, and now none of this gets done, as opposed to 2.5 million getting done, at least part of it. So that, that's my fear a little bit about the 5 million because that's, or almost 6 million. So that's.
I think we need a number as a placeholder and then we'll come back at the hearing. We'll hear from the folks who come.
And then we can change it.
We'll hear. And we can, we can still change it, right?
Yeah.
Andy?
No.
We can still.
I think, again, I mean, I hate to put Lance on the spot, but I think Lance needs to explain, you know, a little bit of what he, where he came up with this and answer the questions about do the older units, you know, support the newer units and some of those things that are, have already been questioned in very little time.
Yeah.
That we're going to hear from other people. And, you know, we did add him as an employee and nobody's really gotten a chance to see him or hear from him because he's been so busy trying to do all this. But I think he needs to be public. I think we need to have him explain some stuff, and even if it's only at a Budget Committee. And I know Kelly had talked about bringing him to a meeting. I just don't remember the schedule. But I just, I just think that we have a lot of questions and I think we have a lot of time to alter this if we need to. But I think there's a lot of people that are looking right now at the interest rate and knowing that when you start dragging these projects out, and it's going to get drug out anyway because there's not going to be supply and there's not going to be, you know.
But once you have the dollars.
But if we get the money approved.
Yeah.
Then we, we've got time to, you know, adjust it the way we want to, to get it done.
Yep.
Okay. I just need a, I need a motion to include on the warrant an article authorizing the school board to enter into a 15-year lease purchase agreement to cover the costs associated, or to cover the cost.
Can we see how this works?
Help me with the motion. I can't.
Well.
Is that last year?
To cover the, should we just do an amount of the proposed?
I think you can do a mode. I just, I just want to put a couple things out there, okay? You know, I do get worried if we put the total dollar amount out because we're in a process in multiple districts. And I understand you're the co-op board and I respect that, but I'm one superintendent that has to run all three districts. So I have to look through a different lens. You know, just historically, we went for less than half this money to do a STEM project and we're not able to pull that off. We passed by one vote, a project that was 1.4 million. And I just, I think, I agree with everybody's sentiments around, people are aware of ventilation more than they ever have been. But we're also going to be probably coming to the end of this pandemic at some point and people have short memories. And people have short memories. And once we put out that number, that's the number that people who are opposed to our budgets are going to start publicizing. And that again is going to be something that we will have to address. Maybe not sitting here as a board, but the emails and things that will come into the SAU. Regarding Lance, I, I think we can easily probably get him there for next week's BudCon meeting. Just, just so you know, our facilities director has not been doing as much high-level facilities because we've been trying to maintain buildings and keep buildings open when we're currently down, I think it's five custodians across the SAU. So it's just not the ideal time to be able to gather information because your time is spent making sure that we're, we're cleaning facilities. So when I look at it, I just simply took half of the 5, 7, 10, 8, 25 and came out with $2,855,412, which is 50% of the total cost. I know that gets me an awful lot of work done. I know it doesn't finish the project. But I am very concerned if we put the 5,710,000 out, is it a number that we can recover from?
Basically on Facebook.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, you know, we're talking about votes and we're in a, an environment now where we seem to be the extremes. And it worries me and is, and I'll be quite honest. You know, most years we are able to accept that battle. We have some other things going on that require our attention at the SAU.
So the number you said was, what did you say, two?
2,855,412, and that's simply half of the estimated dollar total. And then from half, we could go up slightly or down slightly at the public hearing based on feedback we get from individuals.
Okay, so, um, can we make a motion for that? And hopefully we'll get, we'll see how the vote goes. So I need a motion to include on the warrant article, authorizing the school board to enter into 15-year lease purchase agreement for $2,855,412 for, to finance, sorry, to finance the proposed multi-phase energy enrollment expansion project. Anyone want to move that? Motion?
So moved.
Who said that? Krista? I need a second.
I'll second.
Kate.
I question whether multi-phase is, is, if this is a, this is, this is one phase, isn't it?
But it would be a multi-phase project. If we, if we, if we do 2.8, it's halfway.
But, but you're only financing a phase.
Okay, so we can change, I can change.
The likelihood that you're going to get all of this equipment and the workforce to complete it in one summer is slim. So I would say it probably will end up, this, even though it's half of a bigger concept.
But aren't people used to a multi-phase being a plan that now, and we're going to be, we have to find further phases?
Well, but it, that's what it says. It says it's phase one of a multi-phase energy enrollment expansion project. But I don't know what any of the other phases are.
Okay, so would you like me to amend the motion to exclude the word multi-phase? And instead, for the purpose of financing the acquisition and installation of energy-efficient cooling equipment at Hollis Brookline High School? Would that work?
It would better.
Okay, so.
And we have to vote on this tonight?
No, let's, let's just table it.
Because I mean, I, I really.
Let's just table it. I'll, I'll go back to Kelly, I'll go back to Lance. We'll do our best, you may have to have a different meeting on another night beyond your schedule, but we'll just table it for tonight.
Is everybody okay with that?
Or take it to a vote, you've got a motion on the table, take it to a vote.
Okay, I have a motion 2.855412, multi-phase energy enrollment expansion project, all in favor? Four, opposed, two. Okay, there you go, thank you, that was a good point, four, two. Great, um, now we have.
Tom.
I voted against it differently.
Policy, now we have policy work. Okay, so here we go. We have to look at policy, I'm sorry, I'm scrolling through, it's BCB. Sorry, it's not the first one in the packet, is it? Okay. Do I not have it in the packet?
It should be right after the program is finished.
Okay, sorry.
Page 140.
Okay, so we've had this, I need a motion. This is going to be for, um, is this second reading?
Third.
That's the notes from that meeting, sorry. Okay, so I need a motion to accept third, I'm not going to go adopt because we did make a change and we can always adopt it afterwards. But I need a motion to accept, to accept third reading of policy BCB.
So moved.
Moved by.
You all think we can go for an adopt?
Okay, I'm going to just change that to third and adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, I need a second. Tom. Okay, the only change in this is, um, we did a little change on number four. We kept the language about volunteering the same, except we added that board members are expected to maintain professional distance when volunteering. Professional distance, just kind of like keep your boundaries. And then we added number five, related specifically to communication with staff. And we directed them back to policy BHC, which is also in your packet for first read. This is to prevent a situation where board members are unable to serve as a neutral party if a hearing was brought before the board. And then we changed number five to number six. Oh, and we changed, we changed he, she to they up on number three.
I'd like to make a motion to amend.
To third read?
No.
Uh huh, yes.
I, I understand the reason for the last statement added to number four, but I would like to have that removed because the term professional distance is, in my understanding, undefined and could be grounds for people arguing over what, whether what they did was allowed or not.
Okay, so that motion is to amend, is there a second for that?
Well, second.
Okay, all those in favor of removing that language? We're just going to vote on it that way and then we'll go back to the motion. Okay, great, so it's four, five? Okay, so five, all opposed? Anything, Kate, not voting on it?
Yeah, I feel like, just sort of trying to read through again. What did you say, Kate?
I'm so sorry, I was just trying to read through again as I, as we were kind of moving through this quickly. But basically what you're saying is because it's not definable.
He doesn't like the language.
I'm just concerned about leaving another door open.
We can just take it out, it's okay. We've actually addressed it in communications with that, and are, are we okay with the rest of it? So we have a motion on the table, by the way, that was a five, did you vote yes?
No, I did, yeah.
Six, zero vote on that amendment. Now we have a motion on the table to accept it as a third read and adopt. All those in favor? Six, zero.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Actually, as messy as that sounded, it was actually pretty clean. Now we have, I'm sorry.
ADB GBEC is next on the list.
Right, okay, so this is the motion she has. Motion to amend by removing reference to identical policy GBEC, accept the third reading, adopt policy ADB slash GBEC, drug-free workplace and drug-free schools as amended, and rescind policy GBEC. Second, so motion.
I think that's what we had asked.
True to do, that's what we asked her to do. So can, I need a, somebody, move by Tom.
Second.
Second by Kate.
I'll just add that we had asked the question about having it posted in both places. And I confirmed with the School Board Association that, that they will post it in both ADB and GBEC. They have since made that adjustment to Hollis to have it posted in both places as well. So they're just waiting for us to adopt it so they can post it.
Can you remind me what the difference is between the two? I mean, why it's two, why it's got two designations?
So the A section is like general philosophy of the district, very overarching. And then G is for staff.
And there's a whole separate one for students, right?
J. J is students.
Would that be an A and J?
That's the J I C H that it's referencing.
Does that have to also have an A put in, you think? Because, I mean, it, is it an overarching?
So, so ADB sort of covers both students and staff. And then J has additional specifics.
Okay.
Whereas we don't have to worry about those for this, which is.
So essentially one becomes a, a, okay.
Okay, so all in favor? Six, zero. Okay, so now we're up to ones that are more straightforward in terms of. So we've got policy BHC, I need a motion to accept and then.
First.
Yeah, so we need a motion to accept the first reading of policy BHC, board communication with the staff. And we did a lot of work on this, so I need a motion to accept the first read. Moved by Tom, second.
Second.
Kate. So, yeah, it's after GBEC because we rescinded that, it's, and there's quite a few changes. Gina, do you want to go through?
Did we vote to rescind it?
Yes, that was in the last motion. That was, it was a combined motion. So we're now to BHC. So we made some changes to this. We replaced, Gina, will you help me too, in case? We, um, we, we replaced the superintendent of schools with, we added or their designee. We cleaned up some of the language. We also brought in some of the conflict, the board member conflict of interest language into the first paragraph where it says, the board requires its members not only to adhere to all laws regarding of conflict of interest, but that's directly from the conflict of interest statement just because board and employee communication could have the same set of problems. We added a little bit to what we're expecting staff, you know, all different staff members to be and define that as staff, made that definition. We again, complete, cleaned up the language about board communications to staff. And then really the most of the work was done related to official visits to schools. Cleaning up when, what the difference is between an official visit and an unofficial, like a non-official visit. So an official visit to school is when you're invited to school activities. Such visits will, shall be with full knowledge of the superintendent or their designee, building administration and the board, including the board in that so that we would know when other board members are invited to visit. So for example, I hope you all got the email recently. I hope all of the members got the email from Mr. Grisonne inviting all of us to civics classes. So we all know that that's happening, he knows it's happening, superintendent knows it's happening. And then there's also visits to schools where people could just want to go and visit the schools. And that has to be done within the same policy as all visits to schools, KI. So that was more language that we added. And then the last, last paragraph, we didn't change at all. So that was the first read. Are there any questions or comments on that?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, I'm going to remind you guys that like, it would be easier if you read them and had your questions ready because this is, you know.
I did read.
Okay.
The, is there any kind of, I'm wondering about the official visits? And the need to notify the board? And I'm wondering if, if that creates a, a timing issue? So for example, if, if something's going on and Andy or Tim asks you as chair of the board to, to come to the school, can you do that?
I mean, now in today's society, I can send an email really quickly. Whether or not you've read it isn't the issue, I don't need permission, I just need to.
I'm thinking more about depending on what the matter is. It may not be, I don't know if you can communicate those things.
But I don't know if that would, if, if there was something going on that the chair needed to meet with the principal and the superintendent, that's not necessarily a visit, that's more of a, that's not a visit. A visit is like visit to school activities, visit to school, so.
I just want to make sure it's not hamstringing anybody.
Right, I understand what you're asking and I'm, I'm, I'm trying to explain it as best as I can without.
That makes sense.
And it's knowledge, not approval.
Right.
And it's also in the capacity of the board member, not parent.
Right, there's nothing, as a parent, you have your, but you still have to follow, all parents have to follow policy KI, which is visits to schools. And, and there's a whole, but as a parent, it's a diff, that's a whole other ball of wax. This is board member hat only.
And in, in your, in the eyes of this policy, if A, building principal, building administrator is leading a committee, for example, does they then become a designee so that they can communicate directly with the board?
I, I don't think it can, I don't know, does someone else have an answer for that?
I don't necessarily see that as a problem because you could put that in the charge of the committee when you form the committee.
Right.
All I'm saying is I don't, I don't want you to have to be that kind of every time.
No, but I just think it's one of those things that I think that's a good point, Tom, but we could easily make it part of how we, when we form a committee, we always kind of give it the purpose and the vision. We could answer that question as part of that.
And so you're, the whole board's notified because you're part of that committee and when that committee meets, you're there.
Yep.
Yeah.
So do I have to inform the whole committee or the whole board when I'm working on the superintendent evaluation? And I need to meet with administration and the SAU office? Is that something I have to send up?
Well, the SAU office isn't on here, this is schools, so.
You know, I typically meet with Tim or in.
Again, that follows the same idea that it's part of your committee work, so we know those visits are built in. Well, we know you're going to do it, so you've already notified us.
I just want to make sure before I do anything.
I think what I'm hearing is it's not necessarily per event.
It's just knowledge of.
Of an, of an ongoing activity.
Right, because I think Cindy brings up a great point. It's, it is scripted how we're going to do our process. So there's no doubt that Cindy's going to meet with different people or a board chair, whoever's on that committee is going to meet with principals to get feedback. So I think that that's the biggest thing we need to start adding when we form a committee. If the person who's on the board can now obviously just reach out to the committee chairperson who may not be Gina or I. I, I agree, I think that's the best way to go.
Okay, so can we at least approve this for first read? And then I, we have three people who are in the policy committee here. And so we can, we can always, you know, clarify or clean it up? All those in favor? Six, zero, great. Now, and I'm all done with my policies, so we are up to JCA. And we had some questions on that one too, right? Was that the one that was the questions that we got from the public? So, so we need a motion to accept for first read, policy JCA, change of school assignment, best interests, oh, actually, best interest and manifest hardship.
Is for first?
The first, first reading. Moved by Tom, second.
Second.
Kate. I think this is you, right Gina?
Yep, so this.
Was this driven by legislation?
Yep, so there were some changes in the law that required that we make a change to our policy. So it was, the changes were so drastic that we have our original policy up top with the strike through and then put forward most of what was the recommended policy. We had our director of student services review this and make comments, edits, suggestions. And then I brought those to the policy committee. So what was, what was stated over and over again is that, of course, I can't find it right now.
What did the, the director of student services add? She added the language, which is reason, about reasonable, like when.
Which can be reasonably achieved.
Which can be reasonably achieved. So you would find an example of that under two B, number, letter, two I's? I guess it's two, but it's two I's. So the students transfer to another public school, public academy or approve private school within the district of residence, which can be, which can. school within the district of residence which can be, which can reasonably meet the students' educational needs. So that was added in multiple places by the director of student services, so she wanted to make sure that we put that word language in.
Any of this, is any of this coming out NHSBA?
Yes. The language, you mean, of the policy?
The new language?
Yes, a lot of it was the sample policy, and then we see that suggestion that our director of student services added, we've inserted that in multiple places because we, we felt it was important that it was, we are reasonably meeting the needs. So, the request can't be that this is great school in Hawaii and the, and the district is going to fund that along with transportation, that's not a reasonable request. Let's, I mean, that's just a silly example, but, but that was important. We also do have a set admissions process for non-resident tuition, or, yeah, non-resident tuition requests, and that is available on the website, and that could also be available if you simply ask my office or the principals, because we do have students who request to be admitted to our schools and they follow that, and it's, it's a standard application.
So that would be a procedural thing, not a policy?
It's procedural, right, so it's not listed here in the policy.
We're, I know we do have admission requirements, where are they outlined?
In that in JEC.
So JFAB is admission and tuition of non-resident students for a variety of ways that they
could.
I'm talking about that thing, the thing that specifically says students reassigned under this policy shall meet the admission requirements.
Right, so what I, what I'm saying is, under JFAB, one of it is a non-resident tuition, you're not moving in, you just live somewhere else and you want to come to our schools. We made that happen years ago, so we then developed an application. That is a procedural piece, and that's available on our website, and it talks about, we don't have specific criteria, you need to have this grade point average, but, but we request certain things such as your transcript, your conduct record, all, all those pieces, and then, then a decision is made by the superintendent. So that's procedural, and the same would be true for a request made to the board.
Do we have the, for statutory reassignment limit, we're allowed to do that? But I would think if the statutory reassignment, they don't care whether you've got a limit or not if we're, if they're reassigning, you know what I mean?
I would say, I'm not sure that question has been answered fully.
From the state.
I mean, we have a law, I think I can go and have an educational hardship.
Yeah.
I don't know, and maybe I'm wrong, but I don't know of anything that requires that then I accept that child.
I'm thinking, so this doesn't cover, for instance, things where we've had students that the courts have said you have to allow into, into your district?
I mean, a court placement is typically, I'll say, non-negotiable, and we make it work. My question is here, you went to your district, they are with an educational hardship, you're applying to mine, all right? I don't know, we haven't been through this procedure yet, I'm not aware of a superintendent that's had this happen yet, to find out like, if you apply to mine.
Do I have to take?
Do I have to take it?
So the law talks about giving but not necessarily receiving, is that fair?
I, I think the law talks a lot about like, you're having, Andy Corey's having an issue in SAU 41.
Yeah.
His parents present an educational hardship, all right? It's found to be valid, I don't know, like, whose responsibility is to place that child? Is it the parents, and, and they're going district to district? Is it the superintendent calling to see if other districts have room and would accept the child? I, I don't think this has been fully vetted. The other piece is, we have a cost per pupil. If they choose a different district with a different cost per pupil, is that the cost? If they were to choose a school that is not a public school, would that, would we be able to fund that? I, I think there's some questions that haven't been answered around this yet at this time.
So, so if, the default is without definition, it would, it would go to our policy which talks about which sets of tuition rate, correct? It may get challenged, but that would be our starting position, correct?
So, if you go back to JFAB, it talks about, there are a couple different pieces, but it either could be a district sending them and they pay, or the family paying, but either way, it's our per pupil cost.
But, yeah, so, so in, in the absence of something overriding it that we don't, we're not aware of, a reassignment coming to us, we would be able to use our policy regarding costs as the billing amount, at least that's where we'd start.
That's where we would start, I think.
But what if the, what if the district they're coming from has a higher cost per pupil and now we're, you're getting what I'll call a discounted rate? Let's just use our own SAU, I mean, you, if you went to Hollis, cost per pupil is higher than Brookline because of the, the number of infrastructure bonds we've done, so, do you get a benefit, both educationally and financially?
I, I, I'm not saying that that's right, but I'm saying if we approve this policy as it's written, without modifying our other policy or including something in this, such as shall be charged the greater of our policy, I mean, our student or the sending districts.
Gina, you got that note?
Yeah, I, I think that's a great thing to bring back for, you know, when we go to second and third read.
So we'll bring that to the policy committee and.
I have a question for Liz, though.
Oh, sure.
And that is, that statement of reasonably, whatever, that has, those words have clear legal, I shouldn't say clear, but have legal implications. Would that, are we, does the use of that terminology create a concern?
I would also add that our student services legal team reviewed it as well.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought it just came from the dirt.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't specific.
Okay, so, all those in favor for first read?
Oh, you're rushing.
Six zero. I'm not rushing, I just, they're first reads, six zero zero.
But you, you want input, but you want it, you want it to go quickly, you can't have it both ways.
Well, no, you gave us input, did you have more input?
No, but I felt like I was getting the bums of rush while you were asking the last question.
No, 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 it was fine, you know, I, whatever.
Whatever, I know what that means.
She's just nicer than some of us, Tom.
Okay.
I already made Andy mad.
So, to accept the first, next motion, I need a motion to accept the first reading of policy AC, nondiscrimination.
So moved.
Moved by Tom, second?
Second.
Oh, okay, I think that was Krista, or maybe it was Cindy.
It'd be Cindy.
It was Cindy?
Yeah, it'd be Cindy.
I had to put Cindy down, just to be different, not that I ever, John, Dawn just captures it, but.
We waited, we waited the four, five seconds and then both spun, spun at the same time.
Okay, so AC is nondiscrimination, equal opportunity employment, and district anti-discrimination plan. Again, this is, I think, Gina?
So, there were quite a few policies that all three districts were taking a look at, and what I decided to do is to create kind of a policy tree work with our administrators where we all took some. So Tim actually took AC, this is.
That's right.
His work, but really, I'll, I'll explain it, so we took our AC in the beginning, lined it through, there's so many updates that it just made sense to do it that way. Most of this, it comes from the sample, however, it's been amended and adjusted to better suit our structure and what we have in place. Specifically, it references who, the Title IX coordinators, 504 coordinators, human rights officer, et cetera. We also have an AC dash E that we have ready to go, it's, it's not an appendix, it's just another form that relates to this, and we're going to post that on each of our district pages, and it's just basically who to go to if you have a concern, who's your, what's the appropriate channel for any concerns related to discrimination of any sorts. So it's really just to sort of help the public understand where to go, how to navigate the district.
So is there any input or questions on this one?
Yes.
Great. I can't wait to hear.
Does this, this applies to, it looks like it applies to employees, students, anyone in, in it? So B is, is specifically the employment part of it?
Correct.
C is everyone or just students?
All persons employed or served by the district, so that's everyone.
It just, it just seems weird that it says this policy when certain portions of the policy don't apply to some of the people. It's just a weird layout.
Agreed, I've noticed a shift where they're kind of putting more in the A section, and it's making it more all encompassing, even though, you know, some are really for employees and some are more focused towards students, but.
And it's appropriate to have it all in one?
That is the recommendations for, required by law policy. Is there any more input?
Can you just check into the, the order of things? It seems to me that, that having that, the equal opportunity employment is, is somewhat a subset of the majority of the policy, and I'm wondering if it, if it, if the tone would be better understood, if all the general stuff happened first and then the subset stuff happened later.
Okay, okay, so we'll take a look at that in the policy committee, thank you for your input.
Oh, you're very welcome.
All, all those in favor for first read? Six zero, thank you very much. I think we have completed our policy work.
Yes.
I now need a report out from the process observer, that would be you, Krista.
I gotcha. We are only 15 minutes over, which is pretty amazing looking at the deliberations list. I, I think we had thoughtful discussion about everything, I appreciated the presentation today, I think that really helps us, that I think it helps us to, when we're discussing COVID and when we're discussing all the things where we are, and I very honestly did not think it was as bad as I was anticipating it was going to be, so that's very impressive.
So it's great when things come out better than what you thought.
It's really impressive. So I, we did well and we're not too far over on our time.
Great, thank you very much, Krista. And at this point, we are done with our public session, and we need to move into a non-public session, so I need a motion that the board by roll call vote go into non-public session pursuant to R C 91 dash A colon 32 part A, the dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee. Moved by Tom, seconded by Kate? Great, so I need a roll call vote, Kate?
Kate, aye. Who's aye?
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye?
Krista, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Okay, and we are now in non-public at A44.
Can we move the special ed office?
I have to make a pit stop.
Are you coming in?
I have one item first.
Are you going tomorrow?